Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban, a multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole, and I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years, and I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator/controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today, and I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials, impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community, and vice versa. We couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator/controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County: It's Life Well Run.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Kent County Board of Commissioners Meeting. Today's date is Thursday, November 30th, 2017. The time is 8:30 a.m., and we'll begin today with roll calls.
Good morning, Commissioners Vonck.
Here.
Antor.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Vice Chair Volter.
Here.
Commissioners Steck.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Voorhees.
Present.
Coleman.
Here.
Breevy.
Here.
Mast. Commissioner Melton. Commissioners Hennessy.
Here.
Tallon.
Here.
Wolkowski.
Present.
Womack.
Here.
Corndyke.
Present.
Scads.
Here.
Chair Salfeld.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 17 members present, two absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you. We will then move to Agenda Items 3 and 4. I will call on Commissioner Coleman to lead us in indication of which leasings.
Good morning, Commissioners. It seems like in our nation today, there's a lot of trouble and discord, so I thought it appropriate to read briefly this morning from a proclamation made back at another time in our nation's history where there was a lot of trouble and discord. Now therefore, I, Abraham Lincoln, President of the United States, do hereby appoint and set apart the last Thursday in November as a day which I desire to be observed by all my fellow citizens, wherever they may be, as a day of thanksgiving and praise to Almighty God, the beneficent Creator and ruler of the universe. And I do further recommend to my fellow citizens that on that occasion, they do reverently humble themselves in the dust and from thence offer up penitent and fervent prayers. Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings for ourselves, for our families, for our county, our state, and our country. We thank you for the opportunity we had last week to pause, to remember in all the bad news that we see, all the trouble, all the challenges, that you are the provider of so many blessings of which we are very grateful. We thank you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Nice tie-in to face Abraham Lincoln. We will move to Agenda Item Number 5, which is a special order of business. We have one of those this morning, and it will be by the Kent County Road Commission. See, or I guess Mark Rambo.
Yep. We'll hear from both of us today.
Good morning, Mark.
Good morning. My name is Mark Rambo. I'm the current chairperson for the Kent County Road Commission. Also with the board with me today is David Meadma. I wanted to speak a little bit about the board philosophy, and then we'll turn it over to Steve to get into the data and introduce some of our management staff. The drivers, what we focus on is policy, so we're constantly looking at policy to equip and empower our state, the road commission staff to be successful. And I wanted to touch on some of those guiding principles this morning. Not all of them, because I know we have 15 minutes. The first of the guiding principle, one of our major ones is our culture. And we have long embraced a culture of customer service. We are the second-largest road commission in the state of Michigan, yet we desperately try to retain that small organization feel because we were very passionate about being accessible and responsive to the needs of our community. The second of our guiding principles is attempting to keep the road commission relevant. And what that means to us is that we are connected with those that we serve so that we can best understand the needs of those we serve and how to meet their needs. Keeping an organization relevant is not something that just happens. It requires strong relationships with our townships, who we view as our primary clients. It also requires strategic planning, which Steve is very passionate about, and it also focuses on continuous improvement. And our third guiding principle that I wanted to speak about today is fiscal responsibility. We have some of the lowest unfunded liabilities in the state of Michigan as a road commission, and that's a very hot conversation with the legislature right now. In fact, there'll probably be some bills that you'll see rolling out that address that. Our unfunded liabilities are so low at the Kent County Road Commission that we have implemented a plan to have them paid off by 2019. So that's a very nice, fiscally responsible feather in our hat that I think ties very well to the philosophy of the Kent County Board of Commissioners. In closing, and I'm keeping it brief, we believe that the culmination of these principles ultimately position Kent County and the road commission to be successful. And with that, I will turn it over to our managing director, Steve Warren, to talk about some of the details and accomplishments from this past year. So thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Good morning, Steve.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to come again and address this group. I think it was 2015, the last year I was here, so somehow we got last year skipped. I wanted to bring you a little bit up to date on what we've done since then, and I think it's significant. But before I do that, I wanted to introduce some of the key players with the road commission. These are the folks that really get the job done. First of all, Jerry Byrne, Deputy Managing Director in charge of operations, maintenance area. Wayne Harrell, who is our Deputy Managing Director, he covers the engineering area and project development. Also, Tim Hogsmann with our Traffic and Safety Division. One of the newest members of our staff, Macy Barteski, our new Finance Director. We have Steve Roos, who heads up our Buildings and Equipment Division. And last but not least, Maura Lamro, who does all of our communication area, social media and so forth. We couldn't do what we do at the road commission without these folks. And they're very dedicated, and they do a great job, and I couldn't be more proud to work with them. I mentioned, when I was here in 2015, was about the time that the legislature was debating at the will and the demand of the people of Michigan to do something about roads and roads and bridges. And they were debating a package of bills to increase transportation funding. They did so during that year. And what that meant for us, as you can see from this chart, it's a $1.2 billion package statewide. Unfortunately, only half of that money is guaranteed through the Constitution. The Constitution of the state of Michigan protects transportation money that's generated from registration fees, fuel taxes. The other 600 million, or the other half of that $1.2 billion, was voted in by the legislature as being future deductions or future allocations from the general fund. And that's sort of the punchline of my presentation. And I just want to talk a little bit about our plan to use those monies, so how it affects our constituents here in Kent County. But then, a little bit of a warning or precaution, I guess, is we have to make sure that that second 600 million is allocated in future appropriations from the general fund. The two pie charts at the top kind of give you a snapshot where we are with our road conditions currently. And again, we have two major types of roads in Kent County. We have primary roads. Those are the heaviest-volumed roads, the 10 Miles, the 84th Street, Whitneyville, those types of roads. Those carry the most traffic. The other ones are called local roads. Those are the quarter line, section line roads in the townships, many of the subdivision streets that go into those areas. You can see that over the many years leading up to this time period, that our road conditions deteriorated, and you heard me talk about that before. But now with this package, the point of emphasis is we have a plan. We have a plan to turn this around should all those monies come to bear. And on the primary road system, for example, our objective, our long-range vision in the next 10 years is to get that 33% down to about 10%, or conversely, 90% of our roads in good or fair condition. And so you're going to see more and more projects out on the county roads, more orange barrels, more detours. But that's necessary to get us out of the hole that we find ourselves in over these many years of declining revenue. So what it means to Kent County should all this money come to us is about $22 million per year more once this program is fully implemented and once the legislature begins allocating those monies out of the general fund. In 2021, for example, the law requires them to allocate $600 million out of the general fund for transportation and road improvements. This chart really kind of summarizes our plan, and our plan is very performance-measure-driven. So when we talk about what's our plan, well, we've reduced that down based on our projections, based on the road conditions in which we survey every year. We know that in order to keep pace with our objective to hit that 90% good or fair on our primary roads, that we need to hit these targets, these target lane miles of improvement in these different types. So 2018, for, 2017, for example, we identified that we needed to hit a target of at least 18 lane miles. Now, a lane mile is, think of a one-lane road, a mile long. And so if you have a two-lane road, a mile long, you got two lane miles. That's the way we kind of measure our performance. So a four-lane road would be four lane miles. So we know that we need to hit these targets each year. And you'll see on the bottom, preservation, and that continues to be a major emphasis of the road commission. Preservation are those treatments, those surface treatments, that help to keep good roads in good condition. They're the least cost, but the thing about these types of treatments is it's important to hit the timing right. So sometimes you'll see us out there doing a surface treatment on a road that's in relatively good condition, and a lot of people call us up and ask us why. Well, the reason is, is that we need, it's cheaper in the long run to keep that good road in good condition rather than to spend a lot more money and to improve a few roads that have already deteriorated. So we're trying to forestall that deterioration. And you can see as we go forward that those lane mile targets change a little bit. Now, this year, we completed a lot of major projects, projects on Kalamazoo, Peach Ridge, 10 Mile Road. We did some surface treatment. The point here is, is that we completed 23 and 1/2 miles of construction/reconstruction, kind of the heavy-duty rebuilding of some of those roads that had really gone bad. Resurfaced seven and 1/2 miles, exceeded our target of five miles. We exceeded our target too on our preservation list. We exceeded targets on traffic and safety and bridge improvements as well. It's not that we set our targets too low, it's that we had a relatively mild winter last year. So we were able to save $1,000,000 and $2,000,000. And when that happens, that just allows us to enhance that program. But it also is a reflection of the work that particularly Jerry and Wayne do to get these projects out. We had good asphalt prices, and so we were able to exceed our targets. So if you're hoping for anything right now, hope for a mild winter, okay, so that we can hit even more targets next year.
So far, so good.
So far, so good. I mentioned that we have two types of roads. Local roads, and the point I want to make here is that we've got over 2,600 miles of lane miles on our, on our local road system. And as, as Mark mentioned, we have the second-largest road network in the state of Michigan. And what's amazing to me is what we're able to do with the fact that we don't have a county-wide road millage. None of our townships have dedicated millages to roads. And so it's up to the road commission to partner with those townships and to really market the idea of road improvements and preservation so that they will take monies out of their general fund and put it into roads. And I'm, I couldn't be more proud of the relationship we have with the townships. We work very hard to maintain that. And it really is a partnership because by law, they're required to contribute monies toward those local road improvements. We essentially match dollar for dollar when they do paving, or when they do major resurfacing or preservation on those local roads. In the last couple of years, we've really hit high marks. They've contributed on their own about $4.5 million toward road improvements on our local road system. So our objective with regard to local roads as we look forward is to match those dollars. And so part of that money that we're going to be getting with this extra increase is committed toward matching those dollars from our townships. And so you can see that we have a plan. We have an aggressive plan in that those targets increase each year going forward. Right now, we're, we're ahead of the game. We hope with a mild winter and other efficiencies that we can keep exceeding those targets. I'd like to just wrap up to say that the other thing I'm very proud of what we do here at Kent County is the work that we do with our partners. We're under contract to maintain all the state highways. That's about a $10 million contract. That's 450 miles, or over 1,100 miles of state trunk line that we maintain. I mentioned our relationship with the townships. We also have good relationship with the cities. You may not know this, but we buy salt under our own contract. We're allowed by the state to go independently to bid our salt. We buy each year about 80,000 tons of salt. We only use about half of that. The other ones that use that salt, Moncom County Road Commission, City of Kentwood, City of Grand Rapids, all the other cities in Kent County buy under our contract, except for some reason, the village or the city of Kent City does not, but I haven't figured that one out yet. But again, part of, part of what we pride ourselves and work hard is that collaboration, cooperation with our, our fellow partners in this business. And not, not, not the least of which is the work that we do with the Kent County Sheriff's Department. And certainly, we're kind of tied at the hip with regard to traveling and keeping our roads safe. We certainly assist them in traffic incidents and accidents, accident investigations. But you may not know that we actually have three deputies that we pay wages for during the summer season. In fact, one of those deputies is, we pay year-round, and they supervise inmate crews. And so during the summer season, we use three inmate crews to do a lot of the, sort of the necessary work that we need to do along these corridors. Roadside cleanup, tree trimming and tree removal. You'll even see them integrated with some of our pothole patching crews. So we're proud of the relationship we have with Michelle, and with Larry Stillma, and the rest of the folks at the Kent County Sheriff's Department. And with that, I'll conclude and see if there's any questions.
Thank you. We have questions among the commissioners. I see Fisher Ponstein.
So quick on that one. If you're worried about the mild winter, I bought a snow blower, so I'm sure it's not going to snow.
Perfect.
As everyone can see, the city's growing, development's growing too. And a lot of times, you know, you read about problems of cities, is that the infrastructure and the roads are like an afterthought or hindsight. Recently, I drove down M-37 south during a peak time, and you can see cars as far as the eye can see using that road. I know M-37 is a state highway, but do you know what the plans are for that? I mean, how long can that section of the two-lane sustain that traffic load that seems to be heading south out of town?
It's interesting you mention that because at one of the last road commission meetings, our road commissioner, Dave Moran, asked the same question. What's, what's happening with the state system? There's getting to be more and more cars, more and more congestion. What, what's their plan to relieve that? And so we invited Eric Kind, who's the M dot region engineer, to come and make a presentation about their five-year plan. And they've got a lot of projects on the board, but none of which really address some of that long corridor congestion. Now, they do have a project scheduled, a major project on I-96, where I-196 heads to downtown and I-96 continues on toward Muskegon in that east Beltline corridor. They're looking to do a major reconstruction of that area and add some capacity, but corridors like the Beltline, M-37, M-44, some of these heavily congested corridors, right now, they have no plan to, to make any, any third or four-lane type of widenings. And so, and we, we see it too on our system. I mean, traffic in general is growing at about, it seems higher than this, but about 1 and 1/2% per year. But it doesn't take long for that to really reflect itself in some of the congestion on our roads. I think it's symptomatic, it's problematic, you know, of, of a growing economy, of a robust economic area, that more and more people are moving here and congestion is growing. But the state has no plan, at least in the foreseeable future, to address some of that major congestion. And so I think we're going to continue to see it grow, and I think we're going to continue to see some delay along our freeways.
Thank you.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning again, Steve. You had mentioned that the asphalt prices have been pretty low. Is that directly correlated with just petroleum products, oil in general being low right now? And if that's the case, do you have the ability to buy more than what you need under these prices or store, however that works? Is there any type of plan?
Well, Wayne would be probably more versed in this than I, but I would say that petroleum drives that price as much as anything, and transportation costs, they kind of go hand in hand. We don't, we don't have the ability to buy or store asphalt ahead of time. What we do though, and this, this helps immensely to get our prices down, is that if we're doing major projects, and those would be the reconstructs or the crush and shape, or actually removing the surface and putting three inches or whatever down, to get those projects out to bid early in the year. As the contractors are gearing up and setting their schedules, the price bait is pretty good if you get in, in the front of the line. So we work hard to get our engineering, our preparation done the year before, and have these projects ready to go in the front of the line, so to speak, so that we do get good prices.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I know I speak for many of the other commissioners here, and we are so grateful for the work you do, for the board you have, for the staff that supports you. I am a regular user of getting some assistance from the road commission team, from the residents that I represent, and the accessibility and communication is just outstanding.
Thank you.
I just really want to emphasize how grateful I am, we are, for that piece. And I'll never forget a quote, we've had a number of conversations, but one of my favorites from you is that "good roads cost money and bad roads cost more." So that, I think, really sums it up, is how critical it is for the funding, and it is certainly something that we understand and am glad for the plan, and I'm with you and hope that that continues.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Commissioner Wolkowski.
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to say thank you to you, Steve. It's, some, some counties in Michigan, road commission is a four-letter word, and I'm very happy it's not here with the great relationship. Particularly want to thank you for your partnership and leadership on the non-motorized part of things, that the road is shared by pedestrians, people on bikes and that. I know it is a balancing act, pressures on budget and all that, but again, the work that you're doing is, is, is good, and hope we can accelerate that direction as well in the next five years and beyond. So thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Commissioner Breevy.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to echo my colleagues' comments too. I really appreciate the communication that the department provides to the community through, you know, social media. You know, if I contact your office, you guys are all very responsive, and I think it's very important to keep the citizens of Kent County informed, and you're doing a great job, so keep it up.
Thank you.
And I also appreciate Kalamazoo Avenue, 76 to 84, just down the road from my neighborhood. It was beautiful, done ahead of schedule. It's, you know, a great road to drive on, so appreciate all the work you guys have done around.
Thank you. Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I just want to say, after living in a few different states growing up, that I just really commend you on the great roads in Kent County. Whenever I come back to Kent County, soon as I hit Kent County, it's very noticeable that we have some great roads. And, and this being my first year as a commissioner, I do have a few questions for you. When it comes to the asphalt and the materials we're using for resurfacing, are there any laws, regulations, or codes that dictate what we have to buy? And are we using the best material for a state that has the winter, the summer, the fall? We got this material contracting in the winter, extracting in the summer. Could you tell me a little bit about codes, regulation, or how that's dictated with material we use?
Yeah. We have certain specifications that we have to follow. The state has, has, basically specs that, that we have to follow. Now, there is some flexibility variation in that, but if we're doing a, a job using federal aid or state aid in a sense, there is certain requirements that we have to follow in terms of the materials and the specifications. requirements that we have to follow in terms of the materials and the specifications for the construction, including the asphalt. Something new this year, and we're still working through it with the Department of Transportation, is something called warranties. A lot of people during the debate of the last, of 2015, during the gas tax, the legislature kind of responded to the public. Public said, "Well, just make our roads last longer. Increase the specifications. Do what you need to make them last longer." And so, there is regulations. We're working through those right now. But that will be for major projects, projects that essentially exceed $2 million, which in today's world, that doesn't take too much. We can spend $2 million easy on one mile of road. But I think you're going to see more and more of that. MDOT is going to be demonstrating some of those longer pavement life-type materials when they're working on 131 north of 10 Mile. So, we're going to start to see that infuse itself. But I've always said that we build good roads, we just don't invest enough in the preservation. It's like buying a house and never worrying about your roof, or buying a car and never worrying about changing your oil. It's the preservation treatments, is that preventative maintenance, it really makes roads last longer.
All right. I had another question. When it comes to road congestion, like when decisions are made, like along Division Avenue, we now have the bus route, but what departments are doing studying to see how, when we make a decision like that, how it might affect maybe our highway or other traffic nearby that area? Because there's a whole lot of bag-up traffic in Grand Rapids, and as large as this city has been, it seems a lot of it has started in the last three or four years, where there's just a lot of traffic congestion. Is that your department that does some studying, or is that another department we should take those questions to?
Well, it probably is a function, really, of our regional transportation body, which is the Grand Valley Metro Council. So, MDOT, County Road Commission, all the city departments of roads or bridges, the Transit Authority, the non-motorized folks, we all come together as one group and develop a plan. And the staff at the Grand Valley Metro Council, they work to develop projections and analyze different improvements, because a lot of the federal money flows through them. So, there is a plan, if you will, to try to minimize that congestion. But again, I mean, I think you can look around the country and see other examples where cities that are growing, unfortunately, have traffic congestion. It's just a symptomatic thing. So, we do, I think, the most we can to minimize that. But when everybody's leaving to go to work at the same time, or everybody's taking their kid to school at the same time, you're going to get that congestion, so.
All right. Thank you very much, Seth.
Okay, we have time for three more questions. Commissioner Stack.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Steve.
Good morning.
First, thank you for being as responsive as you are when we have issues or questions.
You bet.
One of the points of confusion that I see with a number of the residents from my district is this distinction between the city roads, the county roads, the state roads, and particularly on state roads, so they see the county plowing a state road, or so, and I know you have some contracts to do that, but can you just briefly say, what's the role of the county with respect to state highways?
Okay. Jerry Byrne kind of heads up this, but we're under contract essentially to maintain the state highway network. And what that means is, is during the winter, we're out there plowing, keeping the roads salted. That's generally our first priority, because we try to, during the winter, try to follow, okay, where's most of the traffic traveling? We need to hit those roads first. And then, in this case, it would be the state trunk lines. So, we maintain the state trunk lines during the winter, snow and ice removal. Of course, people run off the roads and they hit guardrails, so we also maintain some of the stuff off the edge of the road. So, during the winter and summer, we're repairing guardrail, cable guardrail, that takes a lot of work. We're also responsible for brush removal, mowing, some of that work. Now, unfortunately, the state has cut back quite a bit on some of that roadside mowing, so we were able to do that less and less. So, we're pretty much directed by them on certain activities. Many cases, we're also bidding out some of their work. If they're doing some ramp repairs that are kind of outside the general realm of maintenance, sometimes we're actually under contract with them under work orders to do additional work. So, you might see our crews out there, our trucks out there, doing a variety of things. But generally, it's more of a minor construction or maintenance. But we certainly work with them on the timing of their projects, so there's a lot of communication back and forth between us on what's going on. But they pretty much design their own major projects. They hire their own contractors to do the major work, so that's kind of the relationship.
And that's the distinction, I think, that a lot of residents miss, that while they see the county trucks plowing the street, when it comes to signage, streetlights, that's not your call.
No. They handle all the traffic control at their intersections, including where their roads intersect our roads. So, they're kind of the big player there, and they kind of dictate what's going to happen as far as traffic control, signalization.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Thank you, Chair. Steve, as you redo roads and redo intersections and whatnot, is there any measure towards accidents as a result of improving the road? Do people take advantage of that? Or is there any thing that you could instruct us on?
Certainly. And that's kind of Tim Hogsma's bailiwick, his traffic and safety. Let me say that from a global perspective, we monitor traffic volumes and vehicle crashes on an annual basis. So, we're constantly monitoring what's going on. Now, when it comes to areas of particular concern, if you were to bring up an issue or a constituent, we take a look at those because conditions change, volumes change, development patterns change, suddenly there's more traffic turning left than there were before. So, we're also responsive to the public and stakeholders in terms of what's going on. So, we have access to all the state's state police data as far as traffic crashes. If there are serious accidents on our system, we send people out. We have people trained in accident investigation. And so, believe me, it's a big, big priority. I don't know that there's any greater priority than trying to maintain the safety of the public on our roads. Now, where it gets difficult is telling people that while it may seem like a serious accident situation or potential, you know, we hear all the time, well, what has to happen? Somebody have to get killed here before you do anything? But you have to remember that we have strict, and we adhere strictly to the Michigan Manual for Traffic Control Devices. So, when it comes to deciding, is a signal warranted or is some other traffic control warranted, we have to adhere to that specific manual and those engineering principles. And because it seems counterintuitive, but sometimes more signs and more signals can actually cause more accidents, too. So, we have to be very judicious in terms of how we control congestion, how we control accidents and traffic at different locations. But again, we're monitoring that on a continuous basis.
Appreciate your good work and your prompt response for over thirty-some years of working with the Road Commission.
Oh, thank you, Ted. It's been a pleasure.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to echo all my colleagues' comments. Poor Jerry Byrne is probably number one on my phone when I pull up Road Commission, and he is the most responsive man in the county. So, thank you so much for all your hard work. A quick question on the $600 million that the legislature appropriated. So, I know that some of that's constitutional, but some of that will be dependent upon each year's legislative makeup and their budget. Was that meant to go into perpetuity or into 2025, and we just have to maintain that support? Do you know what the projection was for that $600 million per year?
Yeah. The law basically says that it is more or less a mandatory allocation.
Okay.
So, the legislature would actually have to take a vote to decide not to invest that money.
Okay, okay.
Which, you know, probably makes it tougher than voting to include something. They would actually have to take a vote, and it'd have to pass both houses, signed by the governor, to exclude those monies. And it is in perpetuity that those dollars would be coming forward. It really begins with this next fiscal year in 19, about $150 million, and then it grows up to $600 million by 2021.
Thank you. Thank you for everything.
Thank you as well. I'll just close. First of all, a comment. I've heard our people at MDOT call Kent County the gold standard as far as their collaboration and working with the county. And so, I know that the state very much looks highly on Kent County Road Commission. I've allowed some more time here today because I do think it's important that our commissioners get a chance to talk through you. I know I get more questions about roads than anything else, unlike Vice Chair Bolter. I call you, so you probably care for me.
You can call either one of us.
More than any other person that I call, but I appreciate always responding to all those as well. And just real quickly, you had mentioned that I-96, 196 backlog, it sounds like, just what's the timing of that? And do you know what the plan is, what they're going to do there?
Well, you may see some of our crews out there this winter, I think, Jerry, right? Yeah, so we're going to be out there actually starting to cut some trees down in the median that kind of is in that convergence or divergence area. But that's a project that is going to be starting next year, and I think at last, I think two-year, at least two-year.
Three-year.
Three-year project. But they're actually, well, if, follow me, but if you're coming from 96 and you're headed toward the Beltline, you make that big curve, and now you want to get over to the East Beltline, I mean, you got to have your head on a swivel and try to get over four lanes of traffic. Well, that's one of the major moves that's actually going to be great separated, which means you'll actually, I think, go over 196 then to make that off-ramp move. So, they're going to separate a lot of those movements to eliminate a lot of that weave merge. So, it's a big project, $100, $150 million worth of work there.
Is that going to alleviate some of that? I mean, there's always backlog every day at 5:00 on that curves going northbound on 96.
Yeah, coming from Cascade.
Yeah.
MDOT has a longer range planned, actually, starting at 28th Street and go all the way through to Fuller, to add a third lane in each direction on the freeway. So, this will help complete kind of the part of that, but they don't have that scheduled yet to add that third lane all the way through. It's desperately needed, I would agree.
Very good. I appreciate it. Again, thanks for all your time today. You know, it's always great to hear from you. I didn't realize we skipped a year, but it was certainly not intentional there, so thank you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Keep doing, keep up the good work, so thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move then to agenda item number six, which is public comment. Is there any public comment this morning? If so, please come forward, state your name and address. And you have three minutes to address the commission. Good morning.
Morning, everybody. My name is Jim Byrne. It's, my last name is spelled B-Y-R-N-E. I'm a resident of Kent County. I live in Cascade, and I'm a longstanding member of the Senior Military Review Committee. I think I've been on it for about fifteen years. Currently, the vice chair, and I'm sort of stepping in for Nancy Nielsen today, who is currently on her annual migration to Texas. So, I just wanted to thank the commissioners for your support of the work that we do to figure out how to spend the dollars that our taxpayers have agreed to spend on our senior citizens. The reason that I keep coming back to this committee is because I value the work that they do so much on behalf of our senior citizens. And as a medical person, I really value the work that is done to help keep people in their homes, to keep them safe, to keep them supported, and to make sure that they get the services that they need to be happy and healthy where they want to be in their lives. So, I also wanted to thank the commissioners that we're currently working with on the committee, Stan Steck and Carol, and Matt Coleman, and also Matthew Van Zetten, who has provided administrative support to the committee. Finally, I'd just like to thank our colleagues at the Area Agency on Aging for the invaluable support that they provide. They have a wonderful team. They provide us with data. They provide us with reviews, quality of service that are provided by all the contractors that we work with. And the thing about this whole process is, it really works. It's hard work. It's sometimes arduous, but we always feel a sense of satisfaction when we get through and are able to present you with what we believe to be a very effective budget to provide the services that you expect us to be providing. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Any other public comments this morning? Good morning.
Hello, my name is Dr. Jennifer Summers, S-U-M-P-E-R-S. I'm actually from Lake County, but please hear me out. I'm speaking to you on behalf of my role as an assistant professor at Grand Valley State University up the hill. I wanted to just talk to you briefly about some work we've been doing currently through the city of Grand Rapids with the Clerk's Office there. My specialty is community accessibility for people with disabilities, and we've been doing research over the last year about voting accessibility for people with disabilities. We've, we're actually, my students are presenting their results tomorrow, which I can email anybody who's interested, if you'd like to attend that research defense, about the themes that we found for people with disabilities in Grand Rapids. One of the limitations of the study was that there was a lot of people in Kent County who were interested in being a part of the study, but we were just focusing on Grand, excuse me, Grand Rapids at the time. So, I'm here to just kind of briefly introduce this research to you, and I've got two of the students who are on that committee with me, Hannah Casiman and Hannah Schweitzart, Schweitzart? I totally murdered that name. So, there'll be four students. They'll be doing research with people with disabilities in your districts, and we hope to present the results of that to you so that we can have better informed voting processes. And of course, I hope to work with Clerk Lyons as well. So, if you've got any questions about that, I'll leave my card with you, several cards here for you, Chair. And I'd be happy to answer questions, and I look forward to presenting these results to you as the time goes on.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other public comments? Have you not seen any, so we will move to agenda item number seven, which is our consent agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Coleman.
I move the consent agenda, including Resolution 88.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Brevi. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? I see none. This is a roll call vote, so I'll call on Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Vaughn.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioners Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Mast.
Melton.
Commissioners Hennessy.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Salfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have seventeen yays, zero nays, two not voting. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you. We move to agenda item number eight, which are resolutions. We have eight of those today. They are all roll call votes, so stand by, Madam Clerk.
I think I haven't lost my voice.
So, the first one, I will call on Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have moved Resolution 89, the 2018 General Appropriations I have moved Resolution eighty-nine, the two thousand and eighteen general appropriation.
Support.
And we have support by Commissioner Jones. Questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanna thank everyone who put forth the time, the effort, the energy to bring this all together. This is a really critical function with what the Administrator's Office puts together, and then we detail and look through. It's where our taxpayers' money is spent and how it's spent. And I have now been doing this for a number of years, and it's a phenomenal process. I'd also like to specifically thank Vice Chair Hennessy for also staying on top of the whole piece and bringing this all together. So, thank you again, Wayman, staff, and all the commissioners who pay so close attention to this important aspect of what we do.
Good, thank you. I've not seen any other.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to, excuse me, echo Commissioner Jones' appreciation for the staff work on this budget. This is the seventeenth one that I voted on, and I recognize it's a heavy lift involving lots of staff time, and not just the Finance Department, but throughout all the county departments. Talked quite a bit about my concerns with the budget. When Finance took it up, and I don't wanna repeat everything I said there, there's a number of things that I'd like to see included that aren't, like park plan acquisition, increased early childhood prevention spending, and funding based on outcomes or results rather than the number or variety of services provided. But my biggest concern is about process. I've expressed concern about this for many years, and I'll say it again, our current process helps us understand the budget, but gives us little opportunity to affect it, to propose and vote on changes. We really only have one chance to do that at the Finance meeting, and then only half the board gets to vote. So, I would encourage us to spend some time after this budget is approved, considering whether or not this is still the way we really wanna do budgets in the future. One suggestion I have is that we spend more time talking about specific priorities, not just broad parameters, at the very front end of the budget process. More and more of the most effective government operations that I see around the country are staff-driven, citizen-directed, and that means doing extra work to learn about all commissioners' priorities. That means asking the public about their priorities, and it means asking the people who do the work, our frontline staff, for their input. Staff-driven, citizen-directed, staff do the driving, but citizens, including commissioners, do the steering. I hope that's something we can consider as we continue to figure out how our budget can be the very best it can be for the citizens of Kent County. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Bourdick.
Thank you, Chair Salfeld. As you know, going through the process, I had some ideas that I thought should be pursued, and it succumbed to the point that I was beginning a little too late in the process. So, I too think we, I appreciate in our meeting last night, some ideas were laid out, so that we do a little more future planning, that we start some of these processes a little earlier. And so, I'm looking forward to the next year and thankful for this year, that we're coming with a balanced budget and, and we're meeting the needs, and I just think there are some other needs and opportunities that we can address and look forward to that, so thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Skaggs.
I just wanna echo Commissioner Jones on thanking staff and her committee for all the work that they did on this budget. Obviously, a lot of extremely positive things at work here, obviously can't name them all. But, but I wanna especially comment on the twelve percent increase in, in park funding, which I think is very important, and the funding for the new vet and mental health courts, which I think hopefully will, will give us benefits for, for years to come. I just wanna also echo Commissioner Voorhees and Talan on, on the improvements that could be made to the process as far as strategic planning. You know, obviously, we've got a lot of challenges. We've had people come to us over the last couple of months as we, you know, move to think about next year's budget with the river, with lead task force recommendations, with increasing park acquisition throughout the county. And then, obviously, we have to make sure that we're continuing to have proper levels of staff, and we do a lot of that in this budget. I think that's really important. But to make sure that we're not overspending in areas, and especially in, I think, in road patrols, making sure that we're partnering with our townships and not, and not putting the burden entirely on our own taxpayers for their, for their road patrols and public safety. But overall, I think this is moving us in the, in the right direction, and again, I appreciate the work everyone did on.
Commissioner Bulkowski.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just echo the thanks around the table and for staff, and of course, this is the easy part for staff, because then on January one, they have to live within the parameters. So, thank you for the experience of that and, and your good work to keep us between the lines. That being said, I do wanna deeply echo Commissioner Talan's comments, whatever it's worth, and I know you tire of me talking about my day job, however, I started working on the FY twenty-nineteen budget two months ago as a citizen advocate, and most days, I feel I have more of an impact on the state budget than I do on the county budget. As a citizen advocate who can go toe-to-toe with our legislators, who do impact line item by line item, sometimes we like to make fun of what they do in Lansing, at the same time, it's a little more fun as a citizen advocate to be part of that budget than this budget. So, I would, I would like to, in January, start looking at that, how we can have a little more fun in the positive ways, and I know that will be more painful for staff and us. However, with pain, there's growth. I'll leave it at that. Thank you all.
Commissioner Corndike.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank Commissioner Jones and the whole Finance Committee for all the work they did on this budget, and staff as well. Lot of work, lot of time, very open, very transparent. As a member of the legislative committee, I was able to be involved in those discussions as well, not excluding anybody. So, I think that's a good process, the way we've done things in the past, it has served us well, and I think it can into the future as, as well. Recent conversation has come up between the Chair and many commissioners in regards to possibly setting a, a time to go over new Commissioner Board priorities. So, I think that makes sense. As I look around the room here, there's eight new commissioners since January of two thousand and thirteen, so there's a lot of, of new ideas and possible input on how we might wanna prioritize and spend the money that we have to make our county, or continue to make our county the best place, I believe, in the state of Michigan to live, work, and raise a family. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'm, I, I agree that, I think it's a good idea that we set priorities and then build the budget around those priorities. I get a little skeptical when we start comparing with the state, because I remember some of the budgets from the state were late, and it was a mess. So, I'm not sure I agree with the process that's in place with the state of Michigan. But I, I do agree and with part of the comments this morning, that it's really a good idea to set your planning, get your priorities, and then build the budget around that, so.
Very good. I too would like to echo the thanks to the staff and to the Finance Committee and Chair Jones of the Finance Committee for the work on this. And with that, I appreciate where, where we're at, and so let's call a roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution eighty-nine, Commissioners Vonck.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioners Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Mast.
Melton. Hennessy. Yes.
Talan.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Chair Salfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have seventeen yes, zero no, two not voting. The motion passes, the resolution is adopted.
Thank you. We will move to the second resolution, and I will call on Commissioner Hennessy.
I'd like to move Resolution number ninety, and it is for the senior milage allocations, and it's for twenty eighteen.
Support. Support by Commissioner Voorhees. Questions or comments on this resolution? Commissioner Bulkowski.
Speaking of my day job, I have to abstain due to disability advocates getting allocations in this, so I will refrain from thanking the committee for its hard work and commending staff for its hard work as well.
Refrain noted.
Refrain noted, thank you. Vice Chair Bolter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanna thank my colleagues who serve on this committee. I know it's a lot of work, but I am so proud to represent a community that takes care of our seniors, and I, I see when I deliver meals on wheels, it, the impact, and it's awesome that we in Kent County take care of those that need the help, so. I just am very proud of this and am glad we're doing it. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Commissioner Corndike.
Thank you, Chair. I would just like to disclose that I'm a volunteer board member on the Fair Housing Center of West Michigan, who's receiving appropriation from this as well, so I will be voting. But thank you very much to the commissioners that did all the work, and also to Jackie and Dr. Byrne and Nancy, people that have been there for a long time, probably since the inception of this milage. I, I served on this committee back thirteen, fourteen years ago. It's a lot of work, it's a lot of good work, and it makes a lot of positive impact in the county, so thank you for your work.
Very good. Commissioner Hennessy.
I'd like to thank the staff at the Area Agency for Aging, because they do provide a very close review, a very careful review of all the programs, and this is anything but a static process, and it really looks at what the needs are and where services need to be provided, and it does have new services, many years. Among the new ones this year will be a senior center, some support, minor support, you know, some support for ALS, a senior center. It's an area where there has not been a neighborhood center. And interestingly, the, the center has actually been operating, and so now we're stepping in and saying, you've done a good job, you're, you're meeting a need in that community, and we can provide, you know, a modicum of help there. Another one that will be new next year that comes to mind right away is that we're going to be having some financial advisory services, and this will be to help people solve some of their budget management problems, and, and perhaps keep them out of the guardianship program where you really completely lose control. So, this is another sort of, you know, early preventive type of service that will, you know, really work to help people. And so, this is the kind of examination that I think is really valuable to what is being done.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. I wanna join in thanking my fellow members on this committee. It is, it is in fact a lot of work, but it's very rewarding work, and, and it's a, it's a decision or a recommendation that comes after, after a lot of thought and a lot of investigation and a lot of input. So, this is, this is done very carefully, and so I'm proud of the work that's generated here and, and look forward to what this is gonna do for me.
Very good. I echo all those thanks as well. I know this is always a very rewarding process that we go through, and it's great to see the end results of that. So, with that, we'll call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution nine-zero, Commissioners Vonck.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioners Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Mast.
Melton. Hennessy. Yes.
Talan.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Chair Salfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have seventeen yays, zero nays, two not present, and one abstention. The motion passes, Resolution ninety is adopted.
Thank you. We will move to the third resolution, and I will call on Vice Chair Bolter.
Thank you, Chair Salfeld. I move item Resolution number ninety-one, two thousand and eighteen current unmet needs funding Department of Health and Human Services.
Support. Support by Commissioner Corndike. Questions or comments on this item? I'm not seeing any. This is a roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution ninety-one, Commissioners Vonck.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioners Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Mast.
Melton. Hennessy. Yes.
Talan.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Chair Salfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have seventeen yays, zero nays, two not present, the motion passes, Resolution ninety-one is adopted.
Thank you. For our fourth resolution, I will call on Commissioner Corndike.
Thank you, Chair Salfeld. I would like to move Resolution number ninety-two of today's date, two thousand and eighteen management, pay plan compensation program.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Jones. Questions or comments on this resolution? I'm not seeing any, so I will call on Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution ninety-two, Commissioners Vonck.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioners Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Mast.
Melton. Hennessy. Yes.
Talan.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Chair Salfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have seventeen yays, zero nays, two not present, the motion passes, Resolution ninety-one is adopted.
Thank you. For our fourth resolution, I will call on Commissioner Corndike.
Thank you, Chair Salfeld. I would like to move Resolution number ninety-two of today's date, two thousand and eighteen management, pay plan compensation program.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Jones. Questions or comments on this resolution? I'm not seeing any, so I will call on Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution ninety-two, Commissioners Vonck.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioners Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
I'm seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 94, Commissioners Vonk?
Yes.
Antor?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter?
Yes.
Commissioner Steck?
Yes.
Ponstein?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Breeby?
Yes.
Mast? Melton? Hennessy?
Yes.
Talon?
Yes.
Volkowski?
Yes.
Womack?
Yes.
Corndyke?
Yes.
Skaggs?
Yes.
Chair Saulfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have seventeen yays, zero nays, two not present. The motion passes. Resolution 94 is adopted.
Thank you. For an ultimate resolution, I will call on Commissioner Vonk.
Thank you, Chair. I'll move Resolution Number 95 of today's date, Labor Agreement Teamster State, County, and Municipal Workers, Local 214 Clarks.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Breeby. Questions or comments on this resolution? Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you, Chair Saulfeld. I didn't want to comment on every single one, but I just wanted to acknowledge that these are negotiated agreements. Both sides came together, the union and the county. I'm sure everyone didn't get everything they wanted or wanted to remove everything they wanted. But it still shows that the two parties could come together, agree on agreement. And you read in the news a lot of times that there's places, a lot of times, that don't get to this point. So I appreciate the hard work on both sides to come to the agreements that were before us this morning.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I see none. I too was saving this up for the final one. And just wanted to thank Amy Ralston and her team for the work that they did on all of these contracts and the negotiations. So with that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 95, Commissioners Vonk?
Yes.
Antor?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter?
Yes.
Commissioner Steck?
Yes.
Ponstein?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Breeby?
Yes.
Mast? Melton? Hennessy?
Yes.
Talon?
Yes.
Volkowski?
Yes.
Womack?
Yes.
Corndyke?
Yes.
Skaggs?
Yes.
Chair Saulfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have seventeen yays, zero nays, two not voting. The motion passes. Resolution 95 is adopted.
Thank you. And for our final resolution today, I'll call on Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move Resolution 96, The Adjustments to the Park Fees.
Support. Support by Commissioner Morgan. Questions or comments on this resolution? Commissioner Hennessy?
I voted against this in the Finance Committee, but I've had many of my concerns about, you know, whether we're, you know, whether market-wise that this is appropriate, that it's nuanced and balanced. And so I will change my vote to voting yes, but it isn't a basis of additional information that was obtained.
Very good. Any other comments? Commissioner Steck?
Thank you, Chair. As I went through this, it strikes me that the principal motivation for the adjustments is to bring our fees in line with market rates for comparable services as opposed to driven by cost analysis. But to me, I think that that is a legitimate consideration. It seems to me that we're engaged in these kinds of activities in the community. It's appropriate that we place ourselves within the market and not understate the market or overstate the market. So I think it's important.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Womack?
Yes. Being part of the Finance Committee, we had a chance to look at this and abstain from the vote to take some further research into some of our park increases. And I found out that some of our prices had been increased in over seven or nine years. And I also agreed with Commissioner Steck that these prices will put us at market value but under so that we're still giving people an option for resources that they need in this community at a fair price, but at the same time, not in a competitive way that is hurting business in the area. So I will be supporting this also today.
Very good. Commissioner Voorhees?
Thank you, Chair Saulfeld. I also voted no in committee on it. I'm just concerned about as we keep increasing fees to do things. And it's just like an addition of another tax. But over the consistency of the years, I've always maintained that our parks or any function here should not be undermining the market. And that's been a concern, and I've voiced that over the years. But I still also voice my concern over increasing fees, fees, fees. And so, but I will support the amendment this morning. But hopefully, as we go forward, we look at where are we in our fees schedules, the increases especially. Thank you.
Commissioner Womack?
One last thing I wanted to add also, that a lot of our park fees that have been raised, there are certain things that I'm concerned with that I found out that we still supply a lot of free needs at these parks. But a lot of times when people want to reserve that to make sure they can come in and tell another family, hey, we have this reserve, there are some prices to that. But we still have a lot of free things within our facilities that they can use. But when it comes to reserving, there were some prices attached to some of them. So I just wanted to add that. I also found that as I researched.
Very good. Okay. I don't see anything else, so I will call on Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 96, Commissioners Vonk?
Yes.
Antor?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter?
Yes.
Commissioner Steck?
Yes.
Ponstein?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Breeby?
Yes.
Mast? Melton? Hennessy?
Yes.
Talon?
Yes.
Volkowski?
Yes.
Womack?
Yes.
Corndyke?
Yes.
Skaggs?
Yes.
Chair Saulfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have seventeen yays, zero nays, two not present. The motion passes. Resolution 96 is adopted.
Very good. Thank you. We move then to Agenda Item Number Nine on our agenda, and that is public comment. This is one minute, public comment. Is there any other public comments today? I see none, so we move then to reports. Agenda Item Number 10. Are there any reports this morning? Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to share that we have the upcoming Fire Commission meeting on December 8th at 8:30 at the Road Commission, and that it'll be my last meeting on the Fire Commission, and my last meeting as chair of that. The last few months we've had, the last few, actually over a year, we've been working on a project along with Commissioner Antor, who sits on that with me, to get what happens on the Fire Commission updated in writing and to have a process that more details will come also to this board throughout this. But you should just know that what we've been doing hasn't necessarily been reflected how things are done in writing. So we've just been an update process with that. And getting that done thoroughly has been quite a few meetings. I'd like to thank Cal and our purchasing staff, who have been really involved with that, along with Linda, who has touched it quite a bit. So that will continue even without my presence there. But just wanted to let everyone know that that is the update there. The reason I won't be doing this is because I have a conflict with my day job, very much what Commissioner Volkowski tends to share occasionally. Now it's my turn. So that will alleviate that and make that all better. So thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just like to report that Frontier Airlines will be returning to the Ford Airport. And early part of December, they'll start their flights.
I've already put to flight. I've already put to flight. Not that anybody cares, but I am. Parade.
And they've got pilots to fly those planes? Yeah, I think so, Commissioner Ponstein. I don't know about some of the other carriers. And just trying to lay the groundwork to recruit another low-cost carrier, such as Spirit or something out there.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Breeby?
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to invite everyone. Tonight, we are wrapping up our lead task force, and we have a town hall meeting tonight. And it's going to be 6:30 to 7:30 at the Human Services Building at 121 Franklin Southeast. And then tomorrow morning, we have another same format town hall at the MSU Extension at 703 Ball Avenue Northeast, and that's from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. The community is invited. We've sent invitations out. We'll be providing our recommendations and kind of giving an update on the progress. We'll have our final lead task force meeting on December 13th at the Health Department at 1 o'clock. And then the board will receive our recommendations.
Very good. Thanks for your work on the committee, subcommittee. Commissioner Vonk?
Thank you, Chair. Hope you all saw the article in the Grand Rapids Press of future plans for the DPW in trash and recycling. And we have lofty goals and plans in place. And we thank our good Director Darbas for doing that. So thanks to him and to the department.
Very good. Any other reports? Okay, we're up to Agenda Item Number 11. And I would ask Vice Chair Bolter to join me. So you're... So today, we're going to pay special recognition to our Director of Elections, Sue DeSteiger, who is retiring. Is it, what's the official date?
Today.
Today. We want Sue to look at one more campaign finance report.
Everybody gets a free pass today.
But I think a lot of us are familiar with Sue. She's always very helpful, very well-run Elections Department office. And you will be sorely missed. And I'm going to have Vice Chair Bolter read a special tribute that we have for you.
All right. Proclamation by Kent County Board of Commissioners. Whereas Sue DeSteiger, Kent County Director of Elections, will retire on November 30th, 2017. And whereas Sue began her elections career in 1981, when she began the Chief Deputy County Clerk in Saline County, Illinois. Whereas in 1992, Sue moved to Michigan to begin selling some of the first optical-scanned voting systems in the state. And whereas Sue was appointed to serve as the Kent County Director of Elections in October of 2001, Sue implemented a new countywide optical-scanned voting system, which replaced her lever machines, touchscreen, and punch card voting. And during her tenure with the county, Sue served on several state committees, including the Michigan Ballot Production Standards Committee, the Qualified Voter File Advisory Committee, the Qualified Voter File Refresh Committee, and the International Electoral Assistance Team for the Independent Electoral Commission of Iraq in Dearborn Heights. Sue was appointed by the Secretary of State Bureau of Elections to serve on the Election Equipment Steering Committee and the Joint Evaluation Committee that wrote the request for proposal for Michigan's new voting system. Sue implemented the first phase of a second new countywide voting system in November of 2017. Sue is highly respected among her peers for her work ethic integrity, loyalty, and dedication. She is a great teacher, support system, and friend to many. Now, therefore, be it resolved at the Kent County Board of Commissioners, hereby recognizes and thanks Sue DeSteiger for her dedication and work as the Kent County Director of Elections and wishes her a healthy and gratifying retirement.
We do also have a gift for you. And if you would like, we could say a few words.
Is the gift my parking card for the garage? I do appreciate this. I'm very honored. It gave away my number of years in elections, and those that I've worked with know that is my passion. I have loved being part of the electoral process. But I have to say that the last sixteen years in Kent have been the most rewarding. It has allowed me the opportunity to do all of the things that is mentioned here. And I've worked so closely with the local city and township clerks of all the municipalities that you represent. And they are the most professional, hardworking clerks and well-respected throughout the state. And I have been proud on all of these state committees and associations that I have been appointed to, to represent the county of Kent. So I thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue. And I would note, too, there is a special recognition this afternoon.
Party. It's a party.
What time?
One to three.
One to three. And the commissioners are all invited. What's that? In here. Okay, very good. Just about done here with the agenda. We move to Item 12, which is miscellaneous. Is there any miscellaneous by commissioners this morning? Commissioner Ponstein?
Dan, do you want to go first, because I've been first a couple times?
Sure. Chair, I'll go first. Thank you. I would just like to recognize and congratulate Grand Rapids Catholic Central High School for winning their second consecutive state championship in football. A very good team, well-coached, well-disciplined, and did a great job this year in Division Four. I'd also like to recognize and congratulate Grand Rapids West Catholic High School for winning their fifth consecutive football state championship, which is an amazing feat. I think only three schools in the history of Michigan high school football have done that. And they did it with two different coaches. So it's just phenomenal accomplishment for both. And then finally, I'd like to recognize and thank, I don't see him here today, Adam London, for all the work he's been doing over the last several weeks with so many important issues in our county that affect the health and well-being of all of our citizens. From the lead task force that he's been heavily involved in, and we have a couple of meetings tonight and tomorrow, as Commissioner Breeby mentioned, to dealing with PFOS up in northern Kent County. And I saw some footage last night with a packed house up in Rockford talking about that important issue that affects all of our citizens. And then finally, the opioid crisis that continues in our county. So thank you to Adam and all his staff for all their hard work helping our citizens understand and deal with all these important issues. So thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you. Thanks, Dan. That shortened what I had to say, so I appreciate it. What I want to talk about is breeding. And I think everyone that's been watching the news has heard
Thanks, Dan. That shortened what I had to say, so I appreciate it. What I want to talk about is breeding, and I think everyone that's been watching the news has heard that we will be losing our two tigers at the zoo. Now, there is a plan that there's going to be some replacements, but, you know, at the end of the days, what zoos used to be and what they are now, they're more about conservation, protecting that genetic lines of endangered species. Now, why aren't they going to be bred at John Ball Zoo is one they can't, and I don't know if the zoo is capable of doing that, but that's an option that's been taken off the table by the state of Michigan, that we cannot breed, and these two tigers are going somewhere else. Now, I'm just going to throw it out. I don't know what the reception would be, but I would at least like staff to at least entertain the notion that the John Ball Zoo boards make a proclamation, and so do this board make a proclamation, to get the state of Michigan to reconsider that. I know my phone was buzzing with Andy McIntyre during the meeting, but I think it's something we need to pursue. Whether it's an option, we do, but it needs to at least be an option for the John Ball Zoo under its new makeup, has that as an option, and as long as that law is on the books, and as far as I can research it, it's there because the state didn't want my neighbor to have two tigers and breed them in his backyard. So, I think it's something we need to look at, and it's a tool I think the John Ball Zoo needs. So, thank you.
Commissioner Skaggs.
I want to congratulate the East Grand Rapids Girls Swim and Dive Team, the state championship in Division Two. I believe that's the twenty-seventh state championship for Coach Butch Briggs, who's a legendary coach in girls' swimming. It is a team that is deeply felt in my heart as my daughter is one of the captains of the team, and the other daughter is a freshman on the team. So, I want to congratulate them on their state championship. For my senior graduating daughter, that was three state championships out of four. It's an incredible program, and really, it's built from Coach Briggs down. But sixty-one, just amazing girls who are learning some incredible life lessons, and just want to congratulate them on their win there.
Excellent. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. Speaking of congratulations, Rockford High School had a water polo state championship along with the band. They had their Flight One championship along with being a chance to perform at the Macy's Day Parade on Thanksgiving. You were one of the fifty-five million viewers. That was our local West Michigan band, right there on the middle star, and I thought those three hundred and seventeen students did a phenomenal job at that moment. So, well done to them.
Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Chair Saulfeld. Regarding the concern that Commissioner Ponstein raised, Carol and I sat on the board and do know that we've been working on the breeding of large carnivores, which is nationally, it's a very important issue in keeping the conservation of certain animals, and especially the tiger. We did have a legislative action on it last year, and it got to the governor's desk and it got vetoed, and primarily because of some conflict coming out of the Detroit Zoo. We again, working with the legislators and with our lobbyists to get this item back up again, and we think that we can do it. We sat, Carol and I, we were in a meeting up at the Treehouse this past year where we had consensus, and everything was good, but then some influence along the line derailed it. But no, yes, that is a concern. The Crawford family donated a lot of money for, to help build the realm up there, and we want to see the tigers there. So, we'll keep the female we have, and then come in the spring, we should be looking for two more tigers coming to replace the two that are moved on. So, there, these two that we have are in prime breeding time in their life, and so, for the sake of the national impact on conservation of animals, a strong part of what the zoo is, that's why we have to make this move at this time. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I just wanted to not miss an opportunity to thank all of our departments that were part of submitting for the annual budget, thank all of our Commissioners for the work and discourse that we had as we began to talk about different ideals for it, and thank our Chair of the Finance Committee and all the work that's been done in annual budget, and also take the chance to thank Wayman Britt for his hard work in being able to ask all our questions to help us get through that a lot quicker, and just support on what Jim Tallon and Commissioner Morgan also said about going into twenty eighteen, being able to look at things a little differently to add to the budget. And I didn't want to miss this opportunity to thank Sue DeSteiger for all of your work, and especially dealing with me. I went through many elections, and I just want you to know how appreciative I am that as I was learning the process, I would call, and if you didn't answer the phone, I left a message, but I learned just how quickly you could get back with somebody, and I know how busy you were and the workload that you have, but you really are a person that saw no big eyes, little u's. I mean, I just a rookie starting, and you were, you always called back. You helped me through the process, and I just want to let you know, I really appreciate you and wish you the best in your retirement.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Just real quickly, wanted to thank Diane Jones for all her work on the Fire Commission. When I first started sitting on that board, some of those meetings would last fifteen or twenty minutes. Some of our recent meetings have been going into the hours, but she has had a really difficult task in front of her to kind of reinvent, restructure that contract, which dates way back into the seventies, I believe, and it needed to be done, and she has done just an incredible job, so I wanted to thank her. And she's got all the groundwork laid now, so it's going to be a lot easier in the future. So, thank you, Diane.
Commissioner Hennessy.
I have been a volunteer member on the New Development Corporation Board, and we work on home renovations, taking that really crappy home that sits in the middle of a block or maybe on the corner, and renovating it so that you can keep up the property values throughout the entire area. And we have an open house tonight around five o'clock at twelve-fifty Ford Northeast. And this was a landbank home, and it was empty for years, and everything is new about this home except for the roof, and it is now lead and asbestos-free, and it's a four-bedroom home now valued at around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So, this is, you know, if you'd like to see what is being done here within the city on home renovations, this group knew northeast, northwest, so that's the emphasis for the area that it covers.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Morgan?
Oh, yeah. I was somewhere else. Sixty-two this year, that's all I got to say. I am your representative on the Kent County Central Dispatch Authority. I will be composing a memo overviewing our activity for the last year, so look for that. It'll be exciting.
All right. I'm holding the gavel. I just have a few announcements myself. Number one, the Administrator Recruitment Subcommittee, you saw my memo with the timeline set forth in that, we do have finalists that we are now prepared to run through the full review process in terms of community forum, an opportunity for the Board of Commissioners to review them, and the goal being that we are able to come to a conclusion and choose a permanent administrator by the end of January. So, that's right on schedule with where we always wanted to be around the first quarter of twenty eighteen. If you've got any questions on that, you can talk to me. Commissioners Morgan, Hennessy, and Vice Chair Bolter are also on that subcommittee if you have questions. Secondly, note that the meeting that was scheduled a week from today on December seventh is canceled. The day before that is December sixth, that evening, we're having our Christmas party, so hopefully we'll see you there. I wanted to also just again say thank you to Sue DeSteiger for all her years here, wonderful service at Kent County. She will be hard to replace, although I know our clerk has already identified a replacement, so that's great. And then finally, just wanted to let you know, we are working up to schedule meetings next year. We are including a handful of additional, what, two extra? So, three total evening meetings that we will have over the course of the year. That was something that several of you had commented on about having a few more of those. That is it. I will call on Commissioner Coleman now with the adjournment.
I move adjournment.
Support.
All in favor, indicate with a "aye." The opposed, we are adjourned.